He might be.
(laughing).
He might be streaming, yeah.
Louis, be careful.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting on Tuesday, October 16th, 2012. We welcome all of you this evening, and if you are new to the council chambers, we have staff reports on the wall to your right. I do ask if you're not part of our public safety that you at least silence, but even better, turn off your cellphones so that they don't cause any interference with our audio equipment. So, thank you very much. I'll call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. And we are going to struggle through without Town Manager Steve Rogers this evening. We may, uh, we'll be sure to leave him a note, how it goes. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Pledge of Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America. I am very well, like the Lord says, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to item four, closed session report. Do we have any closed session report from last meeting?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Next, adoption of tonight's agenda. Do we have any changes or corrections, or is there a motion for adoption?
I move we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up is public comment, and this is a time, if there's an item that is not on tonight's agenda, I would invite anyone that would like to speak on an item to please step forward now. I know we do have some members of the public to speak on about one of our presentations coming up in a few minutes, but anything that's not on here, okay. We'll keep moving right along then and get to our consent calendar. We have three items on that consent calendar. Is there action for the consent items?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to our presentations, and we do have a few here tonight, and I am seeing no one that's here to represent our first presentation from the allied council, so I will hold off on that presentation, and if I see them come in, we will insert them in the proper order. We'll move right ahead to the CAL FIRE Public Safety Quarterly Report, then. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and distinguished town council. My name's Scott Upton, the Napa County Fire Chief. Mike Parks does say how much he misses coming and speaking. He does miss working here, but I don't think too much on the meetings, but, uh...[171.62][171.62](laughing). Um, call volume, 347 for the last quarter, and basically 66 percent still medical aides. As you can see, the town, 89 calls. The vets home, 149. The county areas, 107, and we assisted Napa City twice. It's fairly consistent with, uh, with the call volume. Fire season has been fairly severe this year in Calusa Counties, Lake County. We're reminded of how well fires burn in our area, especially on the east side of Napa County. We don't have too much of a threat down here, but it's been a significant event. Record fuels at low levels, and hopefully we can get out of this. We're expecting some north winds this week, so maybe one last go and it will be done, let's hope. Truck 12 led the way on the vets home again on the July parade. Always a nice deal. Our guys really feel like they work here. They're your fire department. We're very proud of this situation and a good continued community involvement is where we're looking. The benefit dinner for local Kiwanis. Captain Newberry, another special individual that we've have in our ranks, and he was awarded too, along with another fire captain, on a structured fire where they went well above and beyond the call of duty. Unfortunate fire, family was burned out, money out of their own pocket to make sure that they had the things that they needed to get through the evening, so they were awarded at the Red Cross Dinner for the Heroes Breakfast, and most of you were there. It was a good event. Fill the boot firefighters down here in town, $4,000 they earned. Thank you all very much. Just on a side note to that, CAL FIRE started this a few years back, and they've been really, we've been heavily involved in it, and last year we were second in the nation, and we're shooting for, I think Houston Fire Department beat us out by a few thousand bucks, so hopefully we'll be able to top them this year. The Kiwanis lunch, which I tried to attend, but we had a vegetation fire up on the hill and had to leave early. Unfortunately, I understand it was a good, uh, good event. The fire extinguisher training is still going on with some of our folks for the wineries. And the chili cook-off, sorry to the Sheriff's Department, but we did, we won it, but they got the public, um...
Some would call it the consolation prize.
They call, they got the people's choice, I'm sorry, I think you.[331.13][331.13](laughing). But like you said, the guys with guns usually, you know, somebody gets something out of it, so...[336.47][336.47](laughing). In all fairness, just joking. Uh, training, training's a huge important part for us so that we can affect rescue or take care of anything that comes up. These guys do train an awful lot, and it's, uh, it shows when, when they're called to perform. The upcoming events, the toy drive, this community supports that, and we appreciate that very much. It's, uh, quite an event, and the station will be filled up with toys here within the next few months during the holiday season. The ice machine is up and, and running again if you need some. We're getting kind of out of the warm weather, so be ready for next year, but, uh... And then the last page, obviously, is the breakdown by call type, where they took place and such. So, any questions for me?
Any questions about the CAL FIRE report? I do just want to mention on behalf of the whole council that it's really impressive how much community activity that we get from all of the, the staff with CAL FIRE. There's not a single community event that I think we have that, that goes by without you guys being there, and so it's really much appreciated. It also helps break down any kind of, you know, stigma or unfamiliarity or, or, you know, it's true about our Sheriff's Department as well, putting faces with the, the uniforms and the badges really gets the public at ease, what you do at the elementary school as well. It's really great work to, to be a part of, like you say, being a part of the community, working here as well as really being kind of intertwined with the community. So, thank you for all those, and it makes for extra long days, I realize, and you've gotta try to, you know, fit those things in when you can during your busy schedules, but it's much appreciated.
Well, thank you very much. We're very, um, very happy to be part of this community, and that'll continue. One thing that was in the report was the memorial that you had for us on 9/11 out, and that was much appreciated too, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we will hear from our Napa County Sheriff's Department on a public, public safety quarterly report as well. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I understand it's debate night tonight, um, so I'm glad it must not be here, 'cause I'm glad to see there's still only one podium-
That's right.
-in the council chambers.[488.91][488.91](laughing).
Don't want to be chairs.[491.12][491.12](laughing).
Uh, well, Sergeant Wilkinson, uh, is not available, so you need to present this report, but unfortunately for me, he was able to find a, a replacement. This report, of course, covers the months of July, August, and September. There were five events in town during that period. We started out with a bang at the Fourth of July celebration, and ended with a whimper when we turned in our prescription drugs on Drug Takeback Day on September 29th. In between, of course, we had Bastille Day at Bouchon's, the car show at the golf course, and also it, uh, it wouldn't be a quarter without a bike event. We also had a bike event at that time. There were no significant reports at any of those events. Also during this quarter, it was noted that there was an increase on calls for service. I noted kind of a substantial increase, almost by 200 calls for service, but when I compared it to last quarter or same quarter last year, I noticed that report calls or arrests were almost the same, not a big discrepancy there. There was also a significant increase in traffic citations this quarter, and that was due to a dedicated traffic unit that worked, I believe, four or five shifts, and that was a motor unit, and that was specifically assigned for traffic enforcement. So, that, uh, as a result, showed a, uh, increase on citations for this quarter. And if the council has any questions, I'll be having to field any.
Yes, Councilmember Hall?
Hi, Cal, thank you. Just very briefly, can you give us an idea of where those traffic citations or those tickets occurred? Was it specific to a street, people speeding, or was it, I mean, was it the standard stuff?
Uh, I, I can't say for sure, but I noticed that they did some stop sign enforcement at Mulberry and, and Washington. We've had some particular complaints at Mount and Yount, and they also did some enforcement, speed enforcement on the highway, that stretch of highway between the Onramps and Madison.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Yes, I know, we, we were aware when the additional patrol was out there, because I think we all started to hear one or two people say, "What's going on out there?"[665.51][665.51](laughing). "Well, slow down and stop, and you shouldn't have to worry." Uh, Councilmember Dornbecker?
Hi, Cal.
Hi.
I'm assuming that you're talking about the jump in calls for service in August and September as opposed to June, July, and previously?
Yes.
Being large, but overall, can you explain that a little bit, that it's, did it tend to, you know, average out, or what was the deal?
Yeah, well, it, it, some of the calls averaged out. For instance, I noticed the report calls and arrest calls, there wasn't a big significant change. This quarter, there were 42 report calls compared to same year last year. This quarter, there were 49. There were 68 on the last quarter, just before this, these three months, or those three months. So, the only other explanation is when you have added calls that don't require reports or there's no arrests, then it's more disturbing the peace, noise calls, barking dog calls that don't necessarily result in a report being taken, but still a call for service to the sheriff's office.
And traditionally have August and September been so mu, so many more than the rest of the year?
Uh, I would, it would, would be hard to say without looking back. I would anticipate some jump, um, just because of the, uh, being the summer, but sometimes Yountville is hard to predict. Sometimes we just have a jump that's kind of, uh, hard to explain.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Certainly with the additional number of visitors we get during that harvest time, the, the odds certainly climb.
Yes.
Hopefully not the incidents.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, you had a question or a comment?
I know you're trying to leave, I can see it, but...[788.82][788.82](laughing). Um, your citations on parking, I believe I'm responsible for alerting you to a few of those.
Thank you.
If, if, if somebody sees something, I, well, I think it was a week ago, somebody literally parked their Porsche on the sidewalk.
On the, yes.
Literally on the sidewalk. Um, and Cal left them in present. What's, what's the appropriate way for people to call you guys? I mean, I came over to the sheriff's station. It doesn't seem appropriate to call 911, and it's not a true emergency. I'm sure people call 911 for non-emergency reasons all the time, but is, what's the best way to contact you all?
Probably the best way and most consistent way is through our dispatch, which is 253-4451 or 52, and that rings the dispatcher in Napa, and then she can get ahold of any of us on the radio. It's convenient to call into the station, but unfortunately, we're not always in the station, so there may not be anyone there to receive the call. So, the most and best way to reach us is through the dispatcher.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I do just want to repeat our appreciation for, for all of your community involvement as well, and, and we continue this ongoing friendly dialogue back and forth, but it's because we're so thankful for all the continued service that we get both from our Sheriff's Department as well as CAL FIRE, so really on behalf of the whole council and the town and, and our residents, we appreciate it, and, uh, we, we sleep better at night knowing that you're, you're all out there, so...
Well, you're welcome very much, and we also thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay, next up, the next presentation, I don't, I still don't see anybody from our other allied council presentations, so let's move on to the Yountville Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Update. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council. I handed out a little packet of information earlier today. You might have that in front of you. We've got some of our executive board here tonight. I'd like to introduce them. Katya Luffeholz, the board president, Cindy Crater, the board recording secretary, and did I see Jeff Smith, the vice president. Also have some staff here tonight, and I will introduce them to you in a moment. As the chamber enters the fourth quarter, um, we've substantially completed all that the current board has set out as goals for this calendar year. And with that, I'll present to you the following information for your consideration. The Visitor Information Center was a big project, you can't, Visitor Information Center was a big project for us, and, uh, in an effort to enhance the chamber's image and provide additional benefits for our membership, a board subcommittee was established in the early part of the year at our board retreat with the goal of kind of sprucing it up a little bit and hiring some professionally trained staff to assist with meeting and greeting the more than 45,000 visitors we get at the center each year. So, with that, we undertook a remodel, and the cosmetic remodel is near completion with new floors, paint, light fixtures, counters, photo mural. There's a picture of the photo mural there for your viewing enjoyment. A flat screen monitor, and then new merchandising. So, the fresh new look has been very well received by our visitors and our membership as well. The board assisted with hiring a new, new staff person, our Visitor Information Center and member relations manager. I think you've already met Dave Hummer, he's here tonight. Dave? And we just recently hired a marketing and social media manager, Sarah Rusen-Dickens. She's here tonight. Dave is responsible for the day-to-day operations at the visitor's center and establishing a professional relationship with each and every member. Sarah is part-time, working on Facebook, Twitter, our e-newsletter, our website, and other marketing materials and communications as needed. Both are welcome additions to the chamber staff. There's been a lot of discussion about professional training, and you'll notice in your packet that we are, um, partnering with Canvas. Canvas stands for the Concierge Alliance of Napa Valley and Sonoma. It's an excellent organization with, in a professional development workshop that will help our, uh, help hone the skills of our volunteers and staff as they interact with Yountville visitors. And this workshop is going to be offered in December here in Yountville on the 11th, and it's an all-day class, and it's, if you look at the, uh, the workshop schedule, it's very impressive, and the, the woman that's leading the workshop, um, what was her name? Holly Steele. Check out her credentials online. She's amazing. She's done these workshops for NASCAR, for American Express, um, yeah, she's, she's got a quite an impressive resume, and this is, this, this course will be open to any business in town, so I highly recommend that you take a look at it and send your staff, your business staff, or attend the course yourself. It is limited in size, so it wouldn't hurt to get ahold of Canvas pretty soon and, and make your reservation. Events, uh, we took a look at events. Another board subcommittee was established in February at the board retreat with the goal of evaluating all chamber hosted and/or produce events. It refined its goal by taking a look and just focusing on Taste of Yountville, which is our biggest signature event. We'll, we continue to produce other events, but I'll get to those in a minute. The subcommittee concluded that we should move away from the street festival format and focus on creating a world-class event to showcase the Yountville lifestyle. Well, that all sounds fine and good until you get down to the brass tacks. We, we polled our membership at a roundtable discussion in August. We had about 40 different businesses show up representing our membership, and it was unanimous at that time that we continue with the current festival format, but that adding some midweek events that focus on food and wine would be a good addition. The board agreed to move ahead with Taste of Yountville 2013 in its usual format and including the addition of a couple of food and wine-related events to hopefully draw visitors to Yountville, to our hotels, and to our restaurants midweek. As a result of that meeting, we called for proposals to produce Taste of Yountville 2013, and we hired a professional event production company, Steven Restivo Events out of San Rafael, S R E S, has a very impressive resume. You've got a sheet there with their website information on it and telephone numbers. I encourage you to check it out. They've already launched our event on their website. They exchanged Taste of Yountville 2013 for the St. Patrick's Day Festival in San Francisco, gladly.[1303.15][1303.15](laughing). Um, so they're really looking forward to coming into the Napa Valley and working with Yountville. We're also working with the Yountville Tourism Investment District on the Napa Valley Film Festival. We've arranged for the town to be lighted for that gala grand opening event on November 7th, so all the holiday lights or the street lighting along Washington Street will be on. The event theme is Lights, Camera, Action. It'll take place at the Community Center on November 7th. Should be, should be a lot of fun. The Chamber Marketing Committee is also looking at Flavor Napa Valley for 2013. I think it's very important, and the board thinks it's important to participate in that event and for Yountville to be recognized. So, it's a really busy time for us. We're also producing the 8th Annual Celebrity Chefs Veterans Day Luncheon. I'm sure you're all aware of it, and we'll be looking for volunteers, and I know the town and the council has participated in that every year. We're also producing, as you know, the 24th, 24th Annual Festival of Lights, and we'll continue with our quarterly business-to-business exchanges, mixers, and other town-sponsored community events. Public relations. Edelman San Francisco continues to focus on social media and all other, uh, elect, media outlets and electronic promotions. They recently sent out a short lead press for the Festival of Lights, and I believe you have it there in your packet, and have arranged for a photographer to shoot lifestyle images of Yountville for the media. So, that's going to be taking place pretty soon. The summary before you reflects Edelman's first quarter public relations efforts on behalf of the chamber, along with copies of a few recent print articles, and you should have a little table from Edelman. Key coverage impressions, over 126 million, that's Yountville mentions. Number of key articles, 134, and this is just in the last quarter. Number of media opportunities coordinated by Edelman, just in this, in this quarter, 20, and media trips, trip requests coordinated by Edelman, six. And they've been working on our Facebook postings for us until we hired Sarah, so Sarah will be taking care of that. And there's some examples of some interesting articles on Yountville. Edelman also continues to work with the Yountville TID on programming for the town during the shoulder season, which is typically December through April, and I'm sure Steve or someone has already reported on those activities for you. Website and signage. The Yountville Chamber is fortunate to be working with Squarespace on the design of a new website, completely complimentary to us. The site in its final design phase, is, is in its final design phase, and will offer an easy access, user-friendly business directory, videos, individual member pages, and integrate all social media avenues while providing real-time statistics. It'll also offer our membership a new platform for advertising and promotion. The site will belong to the chamber and will be managed in-house, which is a refreshing change of pace since the current site has become stagnant. It is owned and operated by Total Chamber, however, it was complimentary to the chamber. Partnering with Visit Napa Valley, formerly the Napa Valley Destination Council, the chamber will receive a complimentary sign to replace the old wooden sign that's hanging out in front of Visitor Center. They're providing each of the up-valley visitor centers with new signage of similar design. I know you've all seen it. The new sign should be ready for installation shortly. It'll look similar to the one that's at the Welcome Center and hanging out in front of the Welcome Center in Napa. So, in summary, the Yountville Chamber of Commerce continues to focus on promoting local business, creating community through local engagement, providing networking opportunities for our membership while promoting and marketing Yountville as the culinary and cultural heart of the Napa Valley. You have any questions?
Any questions of the presentation? Vice Mayor?
I was gonna say, just thank you to all the board folks who showed up. It's great to see you all here. You too, Dominique, it's nice to see you here. And, uh, I think the chamber over, just overly over the past two years has really kind of kicked things up a notch, and it's great to see that. I say that as a councilman and as a business owner as well, so we'll just keep it going.
Yeah, the town's never been more busy.
I did just want, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions and also make a couple of comments if I could. The comments I'll make, just as a reminder, 'cause I think the general public, especially our visitors, sometimes don't understand, um, the view that the world traveler has on Yountville in particular and the Napa Valley as a whole. I welcomed 30 culinary professionals, chefs, and other professionals in the industry. They were brought here by a private, um, tour company, but through the State Department in Washington, and these were people from literally all over the world, and they were thrilled to be here in Yountville. And sometimes we forget, because we live here, how special that is. I mean, literally, people from Vietnam and, and South Africa and Indonesia, talking about this being the, the best trip they've ever made in their life. And so, it's, uh, humbling, but also an exciting, uh, reminder of what we have here, and also how important it is to continue to market, to continue to enhance the experience for our residents and our visitors, because it doesn't happen on its own. I did want to just ask, first of all, I wanted to ask the dates of some of your events so that people can be planning. You mentioned December 11th for that workshop with Canvas. If you could remind folks of the, um, the chef's luncheon, the Veterans Day Lunch, I believe, is that November 1st?
The Celebrity Chefs Veterans Day Luncheon is on November 1st.
And you're looking for volunteers?
We need about 60 volunteers. Right now, we have, I believe, close to 30, so we're halfway there.
And Taste of Yountville, do you have a date?
Taste of Yountville will be March 16th, Saturday, March 16th. That's the festival date.
Right.
There will be some events, we're currently in the planning stage for some events leading up to it. Thursday evening, all day Friday, and hopefully that will encourage people to come in and stay in our lodging properties midweek.
Okay, and I, I did want to ask, and I apologize for asking this kind of cold, but about America's Cup and how our local chamber might be partnering with the Visit Napa Valley experience, which is clearly a, a major partnership with the America's Cup for next year.
Right. Well, Visit Napa Valley has taken the lead on that, and they're partnering with the Napa Valley Ventners on, as, as sponsor- Napa Valley Ventners as sponsors, major sponsors of the wine component. So the Chambers are just kind of under the umbrella of Visit Napa Valley in terms of promotion. We disseminate all their information when we get it to our membership, so they see all the communications coming from Visit Napa Valley. It is a pretty special event for the Napa Valley, and I don't know if you've seen the races or been down to the marina, but they are spectacular, and we're getting a lot of great photography.
Right. Well, and I think there's an opportunity there that hopefully we can, while partnering with the Valley-wide effort, that we can take advantage of what we can provide that maybe other cities in the valley can't. So I'm sure you're all aware of it and on it.
Yep, you bet.
It was unfortunate to see one of the seventy-five-foot
Oh, yes.
Racing boats upside down outside the Golden Gate Bridge earlier this evening as it was breaking into a bunch of little pieces.
Really?
Yeah. That was a $10 million accident, apparently. But they have more, more boats for next year's racing.
So I encourage all of you, if you haven't been in the Visitor Center lately, come by, check it out, say hello. It's really taking shape. It looks really nice.
Great, thank you, and welcome to our newest and not-so-new anymore, Dave. And thank you also for the Chamber Executive Board being here and supporting as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. We do have one more presentation, and it's coming from the Napa County City-County Library. It will be Director, Dennis Krymer. Welcome back.
It's nice to be here.
I think you only have one presentation this evening, right? Okay.
Yeah, just this.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Council. And is there a remote or we'll just click along? Okay.
We can do it for you.
Okay. So tonight, if you could go back one. I'm presenting our strategic plan to you. This is a plan that we worked on starting in January with members of the community throughout all of Napa County, representing, we had teachers, author, we had the Director of the Napa Valley Museum, the Destination Napa Council was involved, the Rotary Club, representatives from every city that we serve was, so twenty-five members pulled together our strategic plan. And one of the things you'll notice is something different in our name, and it's now Napa County Library. We went under a name change because during the process of this community focus group, we realized that we're, the city-county was confusing, and people thought that was just Napa, and it was a barrier, because we really serve all our cities and towns in Napa County. So we dropped off that city just to have more clarity. And then we also have a brand-new logo there, so it represents getting the information out into the community. And this is our mission, and it continues to be our mission and has been, to enrich people's lives with books and information. So I wanted to talk first off about the volunteer program, because I know that's something that you are probably very interested in, the volunteer program here in Yountville. We started it off on September 5th. We currently have eleven trained volunteers. There was a training today, and there's going to be a training on the 25th for seven more confirmed to attend. You can look at the circulation. It averages about right in the 23 area. I don't know what happened on the 26th. I think that was actually the ribbon cutting, so maybe they were too excited to check out books that night. I don't know, because you can also see that was the most people walking through the door. So I think that's kind of a funny statistic. We don't have last week's up there, because unfortunately, we had to call the emergency medical to come in, dial 911 for our volunteer who was having a medical problem, a medical emergency, and we had to shut down that night. So that's some of the things that happen. So the volunteer program is going along great. In fact, we have enough volunteers, so we're gonna stop asking for volunteers, because we want everybody to have something good and meaningful to do. And there's, so, okay, next slide. Thank you. So in our strategic plan, we looked at service priorities, goals, objectives, and activities, and our organizational competencies. So our service priorities, and these aren't listed in any particular order, and during our focus group, what we did is we talked about what was happening in Napa County, a SWOT analysis. I'm sure you're familiar with the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and just the county in general. And then after we went through that process, we looked at what can the library do? I mean, we can't do anything about the roads, but we can certainly do something about young, early childhood literacy. So this became one of our priorities. And then satisfying a curiosity, lifelong learning. This was something that they thought that the library was very well-positioned to do. Stimulate imagination, reading and viewing, listening for pleasure. The previous slide, you can think of it, the nonfiction side, and this would be the fiction. So the previous slide is like, I want to learn how to garden, or I want to learn how to cook, whereas this slide is just, I want to read a really good book, or I want to watch a good movie, or listen to some good music. Okay, next slide. We also want to help kids succeed in school with homework help, and we've done a lot towards that, but that still continues to be a strong emphasis. Also, connect to the online world. You know, people think that, you know, everybody's connected today, but the reality is during our economic downturn, many of our residents had to give up their internet connection, because that's, you know, a luxury, it's the first thing to go. So they do come to the library for that. And nowadays, you pretty much have to apply for any job you want online. So having that connection and that service is very, very important. Learn to read and write, adult, teen, and family literacy. Last week, we had our tutor appreciation dinner, and this is such an important program in Napa County, and we would like to expand it to all our cities and towns in the county. So if anybody wants to become a tutor to help adults learn to read, this is a great opportunity, and it's extremely rewarding. Information literacy. This was a surprising surface response, but it came out really strong in our focus group. In fact, people got very, well, I'd say a little bit riled up about this, which was surprising to me, but they felt it was really important that we start, that we take on a stronger role of teaching the public on how to find good information on the internet. I think we're over that hump now, where we realize you can find anything on the internet, but the problem with that is, yeah, and you can find a lot of lies, junk, misinformation. How do we find good, valuable information on the internet, online? How can you tell what is a valid resource? So that's something that the library is definitely positioned to do. So those are our service priorities. How are we gonna get there? That's where we get in our goals, our objectives, and our activities. So our first goal, again, not in any order, is making sure that young children have the materials that they need. So how are we gonna do that? You, I'm not gonna read it all for you, you can read that, but some of our activities are just providing a safe and inviting place for children to come into the library, to come to story hour, to do the things that is gonna encourage them to continue to learn and grow. We also provide grandparents and books, where grandparents are just read-to-kids in the library. You know, many of our grandparents are miles away in other states, so it's nice to have that connection. Here in Yountville, we have Grandpa John. John Holt is our volunteer. He's been doing it for many years, and he is just there. Anybody can come in, and he'll read him a story, maybe even you, maybe a story read if it's that kind of day. We want children, mid-range children, I guess you'd call it, ages six to 12, to have those resources to satisfy their curiosity, even out of school, just because they're curious. So how are we gonna go about doing that? So offer our summer reading program. Over three hundred Yountville children were involved in our summer reading program this year. So during the summer, they can just come in and find out about anything they want to learn, rockets or horses or whatever. We want to develop a higher level of programming at all our branches, so that children can have that exposure to good literature. Okay, goal four. We want students to have those resources that they need to succeed in school. I don't know if you're familiar with our Live Homework Help, but students can log on to our website. Using their library card, they can access a actual tutor, live tutor, online. This is a service that is provided when school gets out, about 10 o'clock at night. We also have Spanish-language tutors available, and so they go on the site, they tell them what grade they are in and what they're studying. And most of the students are in the 10th and 11th grade level, and they're doing calculus, which is not surprising, because that's about the time when mom and dad can't help anymore. And then they get help with an actual tutor. So we also want to, another program we want to do is offer more homework help on the computers at the library. Microsoft Office, we make sure that they have those tools that they need to do their homework. I mean, even third graders have to do PowerPoint presentations nowadays. So, next slide. Goal five. We want to involve our teens, keep them reading. That's a lot of, lots of times that's when kids sort of drop out of the library and stop reading. So we want to make sure that all our teens have library cards in Napa County, and one way to do that is we promote a program that we offer, it's called Freegal, where you can go online using your library card and download three music, MP3 music files a week for free. It's pretty much the whole Sony collection and a few independent music. So, you know, that's a reason to have a library card. Within a month, they have all CD, basically, all the songs on a CD. So I think that's a pretty good bribe. So goal six. Some of the activities there is to expand our summer reading club to adults and teens. We started an adult summer reading program. It starts off a little bit slow. We had a lot of participation, because I think if they got halfway through, we were gave some fines, so there's another bribe, I guess. We also want to publish and distribute a TeenZine. This is a magazine for teens, by teens, written by our teens here in Napa County. And one of the things we're also interested in doing, and we're working with libraries in the Bay Area, is to provide the Discover and Go Pass, which is a museum pass that you can check out from the library, and either at a discounted rate or free, be able to go to museums in the Bay Area. I think anybody would be interested in that. We also want to have all this good stuff for adults as well, not just children. So how are you going to offer some good and popular materials? Well, we have a program called Novel List, which is an online resource that helps you find authors and titles that might be of interest to you. So let's say you've read every single Sue Grafton novel, and you can't wait for the next one to come out. You can enter in Sue Grafton, and they'll say, well, try this one, or how about that? Or if you like the girl with the dragon tattoo, they say, oh, then you're gonna like this book. So, and that's something you can get available at home as well. We want to increase our browse in our new book collection. Oh, you went ahead of me. As well. And purchase additional copies of popular materials, so that when you go into the library, there's gonna be something on the shelf that you want to read. Now we're on to eight. Some of the activities that will support this goal is have our up-to-date computers and equipment, provide more public PCs, and increase our connection speed. We're pretty much maxed out. You know, the way internet connections work, you only have as much speed as the smallest cable in the system, so we, even if up-valley, we have a lot of speed going in. If it gets tied up and squeezed down, it's gonna slow everything down. So we're working on that, and we have a pilot program. We're beta-testing Comcast service down in American Canyon, and so far, it's about 50% faster, so we're looking forward to that and hoping that we can spread that out to all our libraries. Goal number nine. Some of the activities support this goal is just keep on providing numerous family programs for everyone in the family, recruit and retain quality literacy tutors. We have more requests for learners than we have tutors available to them, and increase our literacy services at our branches. You know, in our hospitality industry, it really is important. One thing that we learned from our focus group is that there is a career path through the hospitality industry. If you start out as a main, you could actually end up as a general manager someday, but not unless you have good literacy skills to help you get along that career path, also in the wine industry as well. So we find that that's really important. Okay, goal number 10. So we want to implement a roving librarian service. That's pretty much easy here in Yountville, since it's not much to rove, but at our other locations, where it's a larger, a larger building, having a roving librarian just out there, walking around, watching, seeing if people are lost or if they need help, go in and help them right there. And we also want to offer online learning resources and databases. We do that right now. However, we're not sure if people know that they're there. Do you know that you can go online at home and get magazine articles, full-text magazine articles? You can, it's free. And so you didn't even know that, so if you needed a recipe that you saw in a good housekeeping back five years ago, you could go online and you could pull that up, right, today, just with a little search. So we have all these great resources, trying to get the word out, so people know that we have, and it's all there. I like to call it prepaid, since it's already been paid for. So that's what we wanted to do for all of you in our community, but to do that, we have to do some things, call it behind the house, back of the house, is that what they call it in the restaurant biz? And that's our organizational competencies. So we want to increase our external partnerships, work with all our partners, working together. We found out recently that WIC, Women Infant and Children Food Program, you know, they're sending things out into people's homes. Maybe we can get the word out about literacy programs or our books by mail program for our seniors when they do the Meals on Wheels. We can mail books to shut-ins. We do that all the time, but getting the word out and partnering with the people who already are connected with those, people who might use those services. We have been improving our facilities. Yountville was the very first one on the list. It's gorgeous, and then we went on to our main building in Napa, and we just finished up American Canyon. And once we get to Calistoga, all our facilities will be up and running and beautiful and well-maintained. Working with our library commissioners, we will be having, it's CAL-TAC, that stands for California Association of Library Trustees and Commissioners. They're gonna be doing a special training for our commissioners in January. We also want to have our marketing and public relations, just so that people know all that great stuff that we have for them, and it's available online from home 24 hours. You can do it in your pajamas. And then we want to measure and evaluate and see if we're on the right track. Is what we're doing reaching the right people? Are we being successful? Is it making a difference, everything that we do? And operational efficiencies. We have a committee at the libraries called LUT, stands for Library Organization and Optimization Team. And what we do is we look at all the things that we do and see, does it make sense? Are we doing it just because we've always done it that way? I mean, we found out that somebody was laminating a book that gets discarded after six months because the new government document comes out. Why are we laminating it? Let's stop doing that. Low-hanging fruit. Now we're getting to the mid-level fruit, where we need a step ladder, a little bit more work on our part. And looking at our organizational structure. Are we structured the right way? Do we have the right people doing the right jobs for our changing environment and the changing needs of our community? Training and staff development. About two weeks ago, we closed all our branches in the main and we, to the public, and we had an all-day staff training, and we worked on our strategic plan, so that everyone on staff understands where we're going, what our vision is, and how we plan to get there. And so that staff training was very important. So, thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great. I know we do have some members of the public that are gonna have some questions or comments, but before I invite them to speak, are there specific questions about the presentation from the Council?
I do have one.
Councilmember Dornbecker.
Good evening, Dennis. Thank you for coming, and this is a very interesting strategic plan. My question is, speaking of the criteria that you use to judge what is a success My question is, speaking of the criteria that you use to judge what is a success, what is the criteria that you're going to use to judge the success of our volunteer program?
Yes. Well, thank you for asking that. We'll be looking at use. We'll be looking at attendance as well. So, we've asked the volunteers to count how many people come in the door during their time. And we're also looking at the circulation. We'll be looking at how many calls that we're having coming into the main library during that time, if there's questions and issues that come up that they can't answer. What we are finding is that it's, people are mainly coming in and getting their holds. This is what they're doing. So, that doesn't have a lot of inner staff interaction. So...
Well, that's the way it was supposed to be set up.
Yeah, exactly. But, you know, but when you're open, you're open. And people, you know, if they're having questions, we want to make sure people get that.
And can you tell me a little bit about how are the librarians who work in our library and the volunteers, is that working out? Is the relationship okay and all's well?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's fine. We, because there's so many volunteers, it's kind of a new volunteer each week. So, once we kind of get into a rhythm and you see repeat volunteers, I think it'll smooth out nicely.
And then finally, what is your vision for the long term with our program?
Well, this is a pilot program, so we're going to do it for six months to really look at it. And then we'll have to evaluate it, see how it went. And then we'll pull together a recommendation after we evaluate it and go from there. So, it's so early on in the process, I don't feel comfortable saying what we're going to do. I have to be frank, having to call 911 last week was a little scary for everyone involved. And so, we just, things, things like that make sure, hopefully that will never happen again.
And that could have happened anywhere.
It could have happened anytime. And I, we were just thankful that staff was still in the building to assist with that.
Well, thank you. And thank you for, you know, making this, you know, experiment happen. We're all hoping, and I'm sure that you are too, for its success and for it to grow.
Yeah, so far, it looks great.
Good.
Yeah, I think it will be important that we're able to have benchmarks that we can be monitoring in the six months to know. What would be frustrating is after six months, we're told and the volunteers are told, "Well, this didn't happen, that didn't happen." And those things could have happened had they known that's part of the evaluation process. So, communication, I think, with our, our library volunteers and the town will be important throughout the whole trial period, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. I do know we have some members of the public that would like to come up and speak on the strategic plan and the library situation. So, now I invite you to step on up. Welcome. Will I please make sure to get that microphone a little bit lower for you?
I think it does need to be lowered.
Just a touch, thank you.
Mayor, Council, my name is Renata Halliday. I am one of the volunteers. I've been scheduled to work three times. It's work I enjoy, and I'm particularly proud to be part of the library.
Great. Thank you very much. Welcome, Alan. And the microphone's got to go back up. We should have coordinated this a little better.
I think we can manage something as simple as that. Alan Tenscher, 6740 Jefferson Street here in Yountville. I'm a member of the board of the Friends of the Yountville Library, and I want to thank you for your attention to this volunteer program. I think it's a very important program for many reasons. One is building community. I know with recreation, how important that is. I know with whether it be any of the civic organizations, building community at every opportunity in a small town like Yountville, especially as demographics change, is a very important thing. We have a situation right now, as you've heard both from Renata and from Dennis, where we have more volunteers than we have volunteer opportunities. And I know this is going to be phased, and I appreciate your caution as we move forward in wanting to get this right. But we do have a mismatch, and we do have an opportunity. And one of the big prizes, I think, in terms of an opportunity, is that part of a community, both from a tourist side and a resident's side, is a library. I know when our family travels back to the East Coast to Maine for our vacations, we love the Southwest Harbor Library, and it's a very popular library. And if the library is only open a limited amount of time, you can't build the critical mass that it takes to have it be an engine for community and for tourist interest. And I think we have an opportunity to do that. So, as we go forward, I'm asking for your help at every opportunity to increase the volunteer hours as time permits. And I know our volunteers would be happy to do that as well. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Right in the middle this time. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dunbar and councilmembers. I'm Linda Conchilien, the Yountville Library Commissioner. We're thrilled to partner with the county for this innovative library volunteer program, and the foot traffic is increasing weekly. We'd like to start a conversation with the county now about adding more volunteer hours to accommodate all of our volunteers. For example, what are the best hours for the paid staff to work versus the volunteer staff? I know this program will prove successful when evaluated. So, let's have the discussions now so we'll be ready to let our trained volunteers do what they signed up to do, which is to work to keep our library open more hours. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your ongoing service in the commission. Any other members of public like to comment? No? Great. Well, thank you on behalf of the Napa County Library for coming in and sharing the strategic plan. Other final comments, vice mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, first of all, Dennis, thank you for coming up. This is more fun than a couple of years ago, isn't it? I think we all remember, and our original library subcommittee was myself and Councilwoman Muller. And when Dennis came into the county library system, you know, it was kind of the middle of, of some planning phases that were going on, the structure within the library, "I'm going to be kind," needed some help. And I think it's been really fabulous that as things have gotten more solidified and you've made some great changes, that this program has come to fruition. And it's thanks to you, it's thanks to our commissioner, the council members who've worked a lot of hours on it. I think it's great to, Alan, as you say, there's a lot of volunteers. As we all know, any of us who are involved in organizations, particularly in Yountville, Yountville's not that big of a town. And it is, it's like when Cindy talks about getting 60 people to volunteer for the Veterans' Home Dinner. That's a, that's a large percentage of people when it really comes down to an engaged community. And our community is more engaged than normal. But I think what, what I would say is, is that it's great we have all those people now. We want to keep their interest, but it's, it's also probably hard to keep that level of interest. And you do need to think about, we need to get new people involved over time. So, I think the great thing about this is volunteer programs are probably harder to do, but have many more benefits. And I think a great example of it is if you go up-valley and look at the two state parks. What's happened with the state parks and the open space district, you know, is taking a bad situation and the state wanting to close them. And fortunately, the legislature being flexible for a change and allowing some local folks to take it over. And it was great when they said, "The park takes in $250,000. It used to spend $500,000. So, you know what we're going to do this year? We're going to spend $250,000 and tell the community, 'You have to help us.'" And it's worked. And I think that's the way of the future. It's almost like we're going back to the future where we don't just say, "There's some pot of money out there and somebody's going to do it for us for free. Let's get involved and do it ourselves." So, I think this is a great example, and it's, it's really a thrill. Your steering committee could not fix the roads, but I would suggest that voters look at Proposition T in Napa County if they want to have an impact on that. So, I'll get a little plug-in for that.
You're not telling people how to vote.
I didn't tell them how to vote. Our attorney's fine, but just take a look at it.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes, I just have one comment. First of all, thank you for your presentation. And I want to say, if you haven't seen this document, and I'm assuming it's somewhere online or otherwise...
The library.
Napa Library. It's a, it's actually, I mean, having gone through it during the course of our presentation tonight, it's an outstanding strategic plan. I commend you and the efforts that your group put together on this because it's very informative. It's got quantifiable objectives, and it's one that should be a model for what other strategic plans should look like. So, let's make a note. But no, I commend you on that.
And I would just add to those comments that, and you've heard this kind of focus before, but Yountville is a little bit different than a lot of the other communities in the county. And so, sometimes what's working for the city of Napa isn't going to work for Yountville and vice versa. I do think that this can be a model for some of the other similar communities that may or may not be functional for a 75,000 population city. But I appreciate your willingness to pilot this program. I'm confident that we'll show that it's successful. It doesn't cost you money. It should save you money, hopefully. And I think that we can see it replicated because we're seeing this in every, every course of, of action that, that takes place with local government these days is, we need the community's involvement and participation more than ever because we can't just rely on Sacramento or Washington to hand us anything, frankly, anymore. So, we try to provide as many services as we can at the county and the local town level. But when we need help, we need help from our community, and we're seeing that that, that call is being heard. So, hopefully, we can, you know, tweak as we go. We don't want to overreact too quickly to the early success because I think, as the vice members alluding to, if you create a bigger program that can't be sustainable, then it looks like a failure, and that good effort and good intention goes, goes away. So, controlled program that has some fair evaluation that we're all aware of would be, would be great. So, again, thank you. And thank you for being up here just a few short weeks ago with our ad hoc committee and, and many of our aproned volunteers to, to kick off that new program and, and the new hours. So, here's to looking at maybe even more of that success down the road. So, thanks very much. Yes, Councilmember Muller, another comment?
Yes, I'd just like to also thank Dennis for this nice presentation and really to say thanks because we often, in many of our boards and other activities, we're always talking about partnerships. And I think this is a real true example of something that we've worked, you know, together collaboratively with the county to get it to the stage that it's at. And as a library volunteer myself, I'd just like to comment that the people that come in during the first set of hours that we have are so appreciative that we're doing this and so thankful that we've been able to, to work with the county to get this going and, you know, really get it launched that it's really has been something that is very special in our community because of our new community center. And our library's always been a very popular meeting place and a place where people do come. I see a lot of families who don't have computers or the computer bank is like almost always full in there. So, it, it really provides something extra to our community that I really look forward to being able to continue this as well. Plus, I've got a lot more volunteers who keep, you know, wanting to come on. I know we've also partnered with the Friends of the Library to really help us. We've offered, you know, the Kindles to get people signed up. And people were excited about that, but what we have found is that a lot of people don't even want them. They're so excited just to be able to participate in the program that the incentive was really nice and they were thankful, but they're saying, you know, "Give it to somebody else who really needs it." So, I think it's really been a great outpouring from the community. So, thank you for all your help, and we look forward to moving forward.
Yeah, I think another example is our Yountville Arts Literary Club. An example again of how people, when provided the opportunity and a location, can come together and continue to still enjoy books, you know? They aren't extinct like some people thought they were going to be. And so, giving them an opportunity to engage different, you know, young and old. We have our Veterans' Home Community that I'm sure would also, in some cases, like to come down and participate in some of that, you know, grandpa, grandma, reading time. So, we have some real unique opportunities here in, in town, and a lot of folks are taking advantage of it. So, thank you again for helping provide those opportunities. We're going to move on from presentations now and move ahead to our one public hearing for tonight. And that is consideration for adoption of a resolution authorizing the town of Yountville to join the California First Property-Assessed Clean Energy Program, also known as PACE. And we welcome tonight from the county, Steve Letterer. Which hat do you have on tonight, Steve?
I'll go with Public Works Director tonight. I was here a couple of weeks ago talking about this. Same stuff.
What's changed?
Nothing's changed. Actually, last time it was informational presentation. I, I think the town council was interested. And if you still are, there is a formal resolution in front of you. I'm happy to, happy to redo the presentation, happy to answer questions, but basically, we're just looking if you're still interested for your adoption of the resolution. If you do so, just to let you know, City of Napa adopted this morning, well, this afternoon, American Canyon is doing it currently. City of Calistoga will do so as soon as I get there. And City of St. Helena will be adopting next Tuesday on their regularly meeting. So, all, all five cities have joined. The county will do the umbrella resolution at its meeting November 13th, and then we ship all that off to California communities. They're in the process of, of also rounding up other, other jurisdictions to join this phase of the program. So, essentially, they're going to use December through April to finish recruiting, do all the paperwork they need to do to formally launch the program, and hopefully by May, we'll be in a position to have property owners start submitting applications.
I think we can probably forego the full presentation this evening.
I was hoping...
Are there specific questions that people, or people, the council would like to address?
I would like to ask one, please.
Yes.
At what point would homeowners be able to access this program?
That's an unknown at this point. Residential is built into the program, but it's tied to resolution of the, the issues that Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac brought up, which are working their way both through the court and through the federal legislative process. So, frankly, your guess is as good as mine. It wouldn't be in the next six months. Be nice if it could sort, things could sort themselves out in a year. Congressman Thompson actually has a bill in front of Congress to try and deal with that. I'm also not optimistic about Congress getting anything done on that front. So, I'd like to think it will appear at some point, but I couldn't even hazard a guess at this point. Really, nobody can.
And may I ask one last question? And that is, have business owners in the town of Yountville expressed an interest in this program?
I have not heard specifically, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't know. When we were trying to launch the program a couple of years ago, we were definitely getting, we were getting a lot of residential interest, but we were getting a lot of interest from wineries. I don't know restaurants so much, but there was a, there was a pretty broad interest in it. So, I can't tell you, you know, I can't tell you specifics, but, but hopefully there, there will be.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other specific questions? I did just want to point out, I think a couple of the highlights. You mentioned, in the staff report, it's good that we have the benefits, both to the property owners and to the town. Only property owners choosing to opt into the program will, will be assessed. And so, this isn't a universal handed down from the state or anything like that. This is really a, purely an opt-in for property owners, businesses. And also that I think this could turn out to be important, that participants can pay off their assessments at any time. Because if this thing really goes well, then they're not locked into a certain schedule if they're in a position where they can do something sooner than later.
That's correct. There's no prepayment penalty if they choose to pay back the entire loan early. They're, they're welcome to do that.
Seems to be some flexibility in there, which is great.
Yeah. And it is entirely voluntary. There's no, no downside to anyone who's not interested in doing it.
Any other questions or comments, or is there interest in action on this item? Oh, I could invite the public hearing. Thank you very much for the reminder. Because it is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing and invite members of the public to speak on this item. Thank you for reminding me, Councilmember Hall. I thought Mr. Tenscher was just here to stay for the rest of the meeting, just out of course.
Out of the goodness of my heart. Thank you. Alan Tenscher, 6740 Jefferson Street. Just wanted to encourage you to adopt this. I think it's important, every opportunity we get, to take advantage... we get, to take advantage of new technologies that might improve the quality of life for us. I want to also express to you my sadness, I guess, that there isn't a residential component. And as I researched this before speaking on this, it didn't seem clear to me why. I mean, it seemed like it maybe got hung up in politics. But that's the way it is. Half a glass is better than an empty glass. So I encourage you to adopt the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And seeing no other public, I'll close the public hearing portion and invite council to offer action, if not other comments. Are there any other comments prior to action? Is there action to be had?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Hall?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3067-12. Resolution authorizing the town of Yountville to join the California First Program, authorizing the California statewide communities development authority to accept applications from property owners, conduct contractual assessment proceedings, and levy contractual assessments within the territory of the town, and authorizing related actions.
I'll second.
Councilmember Dornbecker, I believe, got in first on that second?
I'm sorry?
If we needed a third, we would have had one. All in favor?
Aye.
No roll call?
No opposed. That's the roll call. No opposed. So thank you very much. And I think Mr. Tenscher just put it very well, that we're going to take advantage of a good program. It could be potentially a very good program in the future for residents as well as businesses. So thank you, Mr. Letterer, for being here. And drive safely to your next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, administrative regular items. I didn't see any in the binder. Do we have any late ads, staff informational reports? No? We will move on then to council member meeting reports and comments. Let's start with the meeting reports. Did not have a flood control meeting today. If I could ask the vice mayor, if you could speak on, well, we'll get to, I do want to talk about Napa County League of Governments meeting, if you are ready to report out on that.
Sure.
We'll do that, and then we'll get back to the other.
Do that now?
Yes.
Okay. Napa County League of Governments meeting met last Thursday? This past Thursday?
Yes.
Last Thursday? At the Doubletree, formerly Gaia Hotel in American Canyon. There was a really excellent speaker who spoke. The broader program was a, essentially, an atlas of Napa Valley that was done, an ecological atlas. And he really spoke specifically on the not only history, but the current and potential future of oak trees in Napa Valley. And he really focused on valley oaks and the valley floor. If you go back, was it 200 years ago, there were 45,000 oak trees, valley oaks on the valley floor. And today, I think there's about, I think they estimate about 1,000 or 2,000 or so.
Robin Groszinger.
Robin Groszinger was the speaker. Thank you. Anyway, it was a really, really well-done presentation. I haven't picked up the atlas, but apparently it's for sale at Copperfields. And it was the number one selling book at Copperfields in the past year, which is interesting. So it looks really, really good. We had, I would say, a surprisingly high attendance NIC log meeting for one month before an election. So, and there was somebody from every jurisdiction, which I have been to those before elections, that didn't have that. So that was, so that was good. And we'll, I think we'll, it'll be interesting to see the makeup of NIC logs' membership in January.
Fair enough. Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency, did you have any highlights?
Me tomorrow.
Right. We have the, I didn't think we met since our last meeting, but we do have a site visit as part of our agenda tomorrow, where we're going to see the new transit center construction. So that'll be interesting to report on at our next meeting.
And I did sit at NIC log next to Tony Honorato, who is the Finance Director for NCTPA. And I asked him, "So what's the timeline? Like, when next year do you expect to move in to the new transit center?" And he said, "We're going to move in by December 1st." And I was like, that's what my reaction was. I was like, "Really?" So there, I gauge that more on just looking at it. They're moving that building along very quickly. And it kind of moved slow to start, and I think the deadlines are looming, so they're moving. But that's, that will be very positive for the transit system and for downtown Napa.
Local agency formation commission of Napa County?
We, our next meeting is December the 3rd. And the only other thing I want to say on that is the California Association, CAL LAFCO, is the Association of the 58 LAFCOs, although arguably it's 57 because San Francisco is county city. So they have no jurisdictional issues to ever deal with. But that met in Monterey. The focus of that conference was shared services. And it's kind of interesting, we had our CAL FIRE and our sheriff's report here today, which is shared services already. Napa County, we can see that we've, over time, had some shared services. Other services in the county that everybody's kind of ingrained with, with their own police department, their own fire department, we can kind of see the political difficulty of making those moves. And if you look around the state, the moves are made, very simply, not out of nostalgia, but out of financial crisis. And so that's always, there's always good things that can come out of tougher situations. So there's a lot of, obviously, a lot of counties that were there, particularly the Central Valley and some of the Southern California cities, that the problems that they are facing are substantial and dire. But it's making them be creative. So there's at least some silver lining out of that. So that was a, that was a, it was a well-hosted conference by Monterey County. And that's all.
Thank you. I know that our public works staff in particular, I know, regularly evaluates shared services. And whether it makes sense or not, sometimes it just doesn't for budgetary reasons or operational issues. But we're kind of always looking for ways to consolidate, share some costs, share some expertise. So it's an important ongoing issue. Napa River Watershed Information Center and Conservancy, maybe the vice mayor could provide that report as well, if there is one. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Actually, we met, I reported on it last time, and we haven't met since.
Okay. Upper Valley Waste Management, anything new?
Then I could have.
Yeah. Several things, Mayor. We discussed last time the extra $50,000 in free services. And that, and that's on top of any existing balance. I don't think Yountville has any. That has been agreed to by all the members. And that will be probably signed off in December 17th at our next meeting when we get the wording in the franchise agreement. Another issue that has come up, especially at the recycling center up here, it's right behind, it's on Silver, it's on Highway 29 behind the Rutherford Grove. Everyone kind of knows where that is, winery. They're seeing a lot of syringes and needles and lancets people are throwing in the recyclable waste. And just I want to let our public know that it's not only, it's illegal to throw that in the recycle waste as well as the garbage. This is hazardous materials. So there are drop-off centers at pharmacies nearby, but all the clinical lays in Calistoga, Saline, and Napa will take your hypodermic needles. So even though the guys on the sorting line, they wear big giant neoprene gloves, they're still getting stuck. So that's a big problem. We're going to be discussing this in a lot more detail, maybe handing out some sharp containers for people. But, you know, people sometimes self-administer drugs, they're caregivers. Also, veterinarian clinics are often handing out needles with medications for your pets. So remember, don't throw them in the recycle or the garbage. Take them to a disposal facility. There will be a hazardous household waste cleanup event. We raised the, we added a dollar a ton charge to the Clover Flat landfill. That's going to be taking care of all these events throughout the year. The next one is going to be this Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 in Calistoga at the Fair Ground. So this is a time to bring any, anything without a cord. Don't bring that. This is hazardous household waste. So this would be a good time to get rid of all that stuff that's lurking about in your garage. Also, Paint Care is a new company that will be disposing of all of our used paint. What we've been doing in the past is always taking it to these waste facilities. Like, we even collect old paint at our corporation yard. But state law has now mandated, the paint companies who sell the paint are now responsible for getting rid of the old paint. So they've hired this company, Paint Care, who will be saving Yountville money because they'll be collecting that paint for us and we won't have to dispose of it ourselves. That program's going to start January 2013. So we'll have more information on that later. And one last item, the Napa County Board of Supervisors, at their next meeting on Tuesday, are going to begin discussions of banning plastic bags in the county. And they expect that this might take a few meetings to really discuss this. But their idea would be that if they had at least board-level support on, at the supervisor level, then much like the, some of the other programs, they'd come to each one of the county, the municipalities to get us to pass resolutions or ordinances. So the discussion is just beginning, so stay tuned. But if anybody wants to make, have time to go to the next board meeting on Tuesday, I think it begins at 9:00, the Board of Supervisors, that's when you're going to start those discussions. So we'll be seeing that coming our way.
Another item that's unlikely to happen before November 6th, I would guess.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Yes. May I ask a question, please, Marjorie? Does that mean, since they have, the Upper Valley Waste Management has agreed to the, for the new franchise agreement and reinstating the money that we thought had been there and wasn't, does that mean that our residents will not have to be paying a little surcharge or premium on their bills so that we can have the garbage day pickup?
I've gotten many calls from people because once we discussed that, people were looking for that surcharge on their bill. Yes, that's exactly what it means. We have not signed the changes to the franchise agreement, but there's all expectations that as soon as the county has some time and brings us the language, that everybody on the board will agree to that. So that's what that will mean. We'll have $50,000 to spend for anything we want in Yountville. And right now, they're asking that we don't spend more than $10,000 a year. So I'll talk to Steve. That language seems fine to me right now because that should cover all the money we need based on past history for our cleanup day. So our resolution's still in place. So once that money is gone, and if no more new money shows up, then our resolution to impose the surcharge, that will be worked out at a much later date. Four, five, six, seven years from now.
Yeah, I think we can leave it up to the staff to help manage the language and manage how that would roll out. But it's definitely positive news for the residents.
Absolutely. And so when will we be able to announce that to our residents, do you think? After the?
Well, there was a mid-December board meeting at which I think the report was that they may be signing off on that.
Yeah, that's when the language will be official and signed off. I've been pushing Steve Letterer to bring that up.
Maybe a Christmas present for our town.
To get that, yes.
That'd be great.
But everyone's agreed that that's, so I don't expect any problem.
Well done.
Very good. I think that does it for our meeting reports. Any specific announcements or comments from the council? I did want to commend, I think, I know what you guys are going to talk about. I did want to commend Samantha and your entire team for another fantastic Yountville Days weekend, culminated with a great, beautiful weather, great parade, one of the largest parade entries, I think, that we've had, over 40. And then great music, just a lot of fun. I think everybody really was enjoying themselves. And so that was really a whole, a nice weekend. The chili cook-off went off, I think, very well, as did movie night, I'm sure. So, and just to recognize our grand marshal again, Sharon Stensis, who certainly deserved that recognition and the drive in the hot red convertible Mustang. I also wanted just to remind folks, since it will be before our next meeting, November 1st, that now that we have our new trolley vehicle online that's been out on the roads, and it's really a smoother ride, a quieter ride, a more efficient ride. So it's, that's great to have on board, that our new extended service will begin November 1st. So starting on the 1st, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So that'll be great. Any other, Councilmember Hall, would you like to make an announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dunbar, too. First of all, everyone hopefully is aware, and I say this to the public who is still avidly watching, the Texas Hold'em Tournament for the Yountville School Foundation is this Friday. It starts at 4:30, or doors will open at 4:30 with the real test or event kicking off at 6:00 p.m. So if you can't make it home early from work to get to the event, we really won't start playing until 6:00. There's an instructional lesson that goes on, instructional lesson that goes on for the first hour, hour and a half. And then the real, so they say, you know, the chips will be ready to be played at that point in time. So please come out, enjoy the festivities, the food. There'll be beer and wine for sale, as well as lots of prizes to go with the top nine winners. And I won't give away the big prize, but it's pretty big. That said, cash and prizes. I also want to wish, cash equivalents, correct, pardon me, cash equivalents and prizes. I also would like to, on a personal note, wish my seven-year-old daughter, her birthday, happy birthday today. She was born last, 2005, 2016. So since she's not watching and not streaming, I'm saying it for my own personal gratification. But today is her seventh birthday, and although we've already celebrated for the last week and a half, one last hurrah. Happy birthday, Olivia. I hope it's going great and that your mom will just stay up late tonight and watch this.
It's not that late. So just to clarify, 4:30, doors open 5:00 to 6:00 is instruction, and 6:00 o'clock is real poker.
Chips, you know, pencils down, it's time to play. That's right. Mayor Dunbar got it right. Because he is a signed-up member. So if you want to come beat the mayor, please get your order in early because we're almost sold out.
Website.
www.fundyountville.com or the deli. Or show up.
I did practice losing in public when I played in the bocce tournament on Saturday and was quickly ushered out by the former champion. But I figure if you're going to lose, you might as well lose to the former champion.
Exactly. No, everyone's odds are good and we're going to have a good time.
Any other announcements? With that, we did survive without our esteemed town leader, who's back in Michigan enjoying some well-earned time with family.
Our town clerk.
And our town clerk is off as well. So thank you, Julie, also, for standing in. Bob, and all of the rest of you familiar faces doing your normal great job. We will be, no need for a closed session, I believe?
That's correct.
Great. So let's, looking at future agenda items that are listed here, our next regularly scheduled council meeting is set for Tuesday, November 6th at 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adjourn to that date?
A motion, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to our next council meeting, 6:00 p.m., November the 6th.
Second.
And that will be election night, so it's likely to be a fairly short agenda. But good luck to all the folks that are.